I'm going to call this special meeting to order of the City Council for May 26, 2015. Since we may have some new people in the audience, just want to go over the evacuation procedures. We hope we will not have to use those, but in case of a fire, we would ask you to please orderly leave the council chamber and exit the building and reconvene in front of the sign at the St. Clair County Courthouse. That way, we can check to see who's here and who isn't. But in case of severe weather and a storm, we would ask you to please exit the council chambers, take a right, and then go down in front of the clerk's office or stairways that would take you downstairs to the secure area. So hopefully, that will not take place, but in case we need to move, that will be our direction. Okay, rogue hall of aldermen.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Kinsella.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Bittner.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Silsby.
Here.
Alderman Dintelman.
Here.
Alderman Cybert.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Alderman Galetti. Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wiggington.
Here.
Alderman Musgrove.
Here.
Alderman Galetti has called. He's unable to make it tonight. He is excused. Rogue call of department heads.
City Attorney Horner.
Here.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
Police Chief Clay. Fire Chief Poor. Ken Vaughn. Royce Carlisle. Jamie Matric. Tim Gregwitz. Jim Schneider. Leander Spearman. Chuck Schaefer. Bob Sabo. Debbie Belleville. Anissa McCaskill.
Okay, I don't know whether or not all the department heads were required to be here, but we thank those who were here. We also want to welcome the mayor, who is biased by satellite. He was unable to be here this evening. His son is getting married, so he is out of town. Welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you.
Okay, at this time.
First, I think.
This time, I'd like everyone to please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm now going to open this meeting for public participation. Again, a couple reminders that we would ask you to please address the issues that are on this particular meeting. We have another meeting coming up next Monday, which will be the first meeting of the month, so please keep your comments to this particular topic this evening. Also, remind you that please, when you step to the microphone, please state your name and your address, and please keep your comments to two to three minutes. So at this time, I will open. Yes, sir.
Rick Schmidt, 15 North 10th Street, Belleville. This is a very important meeting tonight. Some forty-five odd years ago, a council had a similar meeting, and they decided to vote no against St. Clair Square. They voted no against Highway 64. In hindsight, this is 2020, what would Belleville be like if they would have voted yes? Fairview Heights voted yes for St. Clair Square. Fairview Heights voted yes for Highway 64. My friends that live in Fairview Heights pay property taxes are half of what we pay in Belleville. That's all I got. Thank you very much.
I don't know if we would maybe pause just a moment and allow someone from the shrine. Would you like to make any comments this evening prior to other participation?
Mayor, City Council, and citizens of Belleville. I'm Chris Deal, and I work at the National Shrine of Related Snows, which is owned and operated by the Missionary Oblates of Mary Immaculate. I would like to thank the Keller family and their business partners for the opportunity to allow the Missionary Oblates to get back to their core ministry, which is their core mission, which is ministry. The construction of the hotel and the restaurants allow for this. The Missionary Oblates can put their focus on ministry and not carpets, hotel, restaurant furniture, HVAC units, and other major capital. Their focus can be more directed to serving the poorest of the poor and preaching the gospel to all who seek it. This development will allow the employees of the Shrine Hotel and the restaurant to be transferred to a new hotel and restaurants. The development would allow for several hundred new jobs to be created and already on top of those being transferred. The creation of new jobs and transferring of this is extremely exciting for all of us. Now, this is exciting, just not enough, but it brings high-class establishments of which some could not be duplicated in the metro area. All of these would attract more pilgrims, visitors, guests, and dollars to Belleville. Thank you to the city of Belleville and the council for this opportunity to see prosperity, to see growth, to see hope, to see job creation, and the formation of partnerships that will lay a foundation for a bright future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other individuals that want to speak? Mike?
Michael Hackberg, 701 Centerville Avenue. I want to talk about upfront versus TIF revenue expenses. The mayor has repeatedly stated that the only upfront money is the $227,000 for the sewer design and the $2 million for its construction. Last Friday evening, I got a partial answer to the questions I raised at the public hearing on May 11th. In this reply, Mr. Norber indicated that $3 million upfront expense will be set aside for the sewer system. So this has gone from a $2 million to a $3 million sewer system, and nobody's put a shovel in the dirt yet. Mr. Norber also indicated that just over $1 million is required for studies, surveys, development of plans, and administration of the TIF. He didn't specify what types of studies are required, but others have mentioned that archaeology study must be completed before any earth is moved. Is this true, and will the city have to fund the study upfront? As to the reference to the development of plans, will this also be an expense paid before any TIF revenue is generated? Just over half a million dollars is for property, assembly, clearing, and grading of the land. I'm going to take a wild guess and say that these items are all going to have to be paid for before any TIF revenue is generated. And finally, we have $1.28 million for public works. Can you tell me if the private road currently leading to the printing factory will be vacated to the city so that the city can then pay for the improvements to the roadway, sidewalks, and streetlights? And is the city planning on building a stormwater retention system as part of that $1.28 million of public works, both of which would have to be done before any TIF revenue is generated? Some people think that I'm not in favor of this TIF succeeding. This is false. My questions and interests are to, on the entire process, is to bring honesty and openness to the public. From very on, I thought that this TIF would be created, and if it is, I hope from the bottom of my heart that it is wildly successful. For only if it is successful, will the taxpayers be able to recover their upfront investment on this project. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Julie Orlett. I live at 208 East Main Street in Belleville. I don't know a whole lot about TIF, and I don't know a whole lot about upfront costs, but when I hear that people are trying to come to Belleville to develop something big and good, I think we must pay attention to that. If we don't, they'll go someplace else. Developers don't come and start talking like this if they don't mean to spend money and bring business to a place. We can't miss, this gentleman here pointed out years ago, we've made mistakes, and everybody who's lived here remembers that. It's true, we've lost business before because people talk about stepping over dollars to pick up dimes, and I kind of think we've done that in the past. So I would urge the council to please don't look at the upfront costs, because there will always be upfront costs of things. We have to look at the long term. We have to look at our west end of town. We have to revitalize that, and we have people who are willing to come in and invest in us. I think we must invest back into our community.
Thank you. Rose?
Rose Wilson, 322 West I Street. I just want to ask the council tonight to put aside personal differences, political differences, and vote what is best for Belleville. What is best for Belleville is a yes vote. Thank you.
Lillian?
Lillian Schneider, 219 Kansas Avenue. Belleville Crossing came, we got car dealerships, Target, Home Depot, and I'm sure when this all happened, we were told, if this happens, Belleville will develop. Well, what about still? The old buildings still have not been filled. You got Kmart complex empty. You take Walmart, oh, they're going to move out of Belleville to the outskirts of Belleville. That building's still sitting empty. The buildings in the little strip mall between Office Depot and Schnucks, there's a lot of empty ones in there. If this happens, it's going to be the same way. Everything is going to the outskirts of Belleville. We will never develop the inner part of Belleville. It hasn't happened with the Walmart deal. It has not happened with Belleville Crossing. It has not happened with the car dealerships. If it was such a great thing, why did this development not go out by Belleville Crossing? Keep it in, close to Belleville. Your Main Street isn't going to be nothing. It is decaying. Take a look at the buildings. It is bad. And another thing is the amount of the cost. In the paper, it says, "The developer said the project may cost up to $60 million to get off the ground," up from the initial estimate of $50 million. "It could produce up to $500,000 in annual sales tax revenue for the city." That is, if it does. But what about all the money we have spent? Or is it going to be like the Wagner dealership? Oh, we'll do this, and then all of a sudden, we need more. We need more. We need more. And what has it happened? Where has Wagner gone? He's not Wagner no more. We need to develop what is vacant and decaying before we go out and expand. Nothing's going to come back into the city of Belleville. It's all going to keep going out, out. And you're going to, it's like a present. You can have it wrapped beautifully with a great big bow, and when you open it, you got a lump of it. And that's exactly what's happening with the city of Belleville. And I don't know if the attorney can ask this question. I had asked for the, when we had to submit our questions, when I was in Alderman, why I wasn't giving the financial papers, and I got the email back, or the letter back from Eric stating that the mayor and them, that it was only personal information, so it would not be given out. Is it not true, us, the aldermen at the time, when I asked for this, we were looking out for the taxpayers' money, and we weren't given the information we should have been given? It's the same way with this, and I'm going to say it again. You watch. Main Street, the $20 shoe place, Kmart, it's all going to keep decaying. More and more, each month, there's another empty building. And we need to tell them, if they want to develop this, develop closer in town. Everything is going out of town, and that's where the people are fleeing, is out of town.
Any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Gloria Crowder, and I live at 18 Crest, I'm kind of short. I live at 18 Crestwood Court, Belleville, Illinois. And I was part of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. And this project is cited for Highway 15, which will include restaurants that seats 1,000 people, two hotels, over 300 rooms, and a convention center, dining seating for 1,200 people, four to six additional restaurants, convenience store, and a winery. This development satisfies several strategic recommendations from this award-winning comprehensive plan. This award-winning comprehensive plan had extensive, diverse public involvement, which I am very proud to say that I was one of those diverse, grassroots Belleville citizens who can and will tell you that if this comprehensive plan is approved, rest assured that all of you here this evening will have heard from the residents of Belleville. I strongly recommend that this award-winning plan be approved. Did I mention that this is an award-winning comprehensive plan? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Patty Law. I live at 221 East Main. I also operate a hair and nail salon. I don't know what downtown you've been at, but our downtown is not decaying. I can guarantee you that. It's growing. This is a win-win situation. I have worked downtown for 45 years, and we did turn down something that would have been fantastic. I lived in Belleville and worked downtown when it was literally a ghost town after that. I mean, everything left. There was nothing. It has been built up and built up. Our downtown is fantastic, and this would be nothing but more. It would be something that'd be an opportunity that we, it would just put us totally on the map. I have customers. I have young and old customers. The young customers are usually like, yeah, well, I'm good for anything new. The older customers, it takes a little bit more to persuade them. They think this is a fantastic deal. Hotels, I had four customers through the winter season that their family was coming in. Give me a good hotel. Duh, I couldn't downtown. The shrine, yes. Fairview Heights, that's where they ended up, in Fairview Heights. There is just so much excitement about this, and it is, it is definitely a win-win situation for Belleville. I am 100% for this project.
Thank you.
My name is William H. Breaman, Sr. This project has been in the works for two years, according to the mayor. This was first brought to-
Sir, address, please.
Mayor Eckert. His honor, Mayor Eckert.
Sir, could I get your address, please?
I'm not required to give my address under the new law that's under the Open Meetings Act, so I will give it. It's not a problem. 5500 Norah Court. I'm actually not a resident of Belleville. I am an appointed precinct committee man for the city of Belleville. Four, 12 is the number of, is the precinct. I care more about the city of Belleville probably than most of the residents do. 18% voted in the last election. It's pretty sad. Getting back to my point, starting in January, we started hearing about the shrine. Everything was in secrecy. What is the secrecy? Why can't we just be forthcoming and put the plan in front of the council members with the facts that none of them were given? A majority here are new council members who have really no history with this project. I'm not sure what answers you got. The public never got any answers about the Keller Group. The numbers have changed continually, as my friend, Michael Hagbert, explained. We were told there were going to be 220 jobs at this project. We weren't told that 80 of them were going to come from the shrine. I sent that information to the, letter to the editor. They chose to edit my letter, which was printed, I think it was last Saturday. I also stated in my letter that it is not the responsibility of the citizens of Belleville to carry out the mission of the Oblate Fathers. I've been told now twice of how they help the poorest of the poor. In my letter to the editor, I said, "Where are the poorest of the poor?" Are they housed at the hotel at the shrine? I don't think so. They are housed in Mexico, South America, and while that's a very noble enterprise, it is not the business of the taxpayers of Belleville to fund that project for the Oblate Fathers. I think history will record the yes votes here. I won't be around 35 years from now. I won't be here 23 years from now when this TIF finally comes to its conclusion, but I will be here in the next several years to watch the progress, and I hope that this progress, this project succeeds for the benefits of the Belleville residents. That's all I have to say.
Hi, Daryl Coons, 507 North 43rd Street. Been a resident in Belleville for 24 years now. Next week, on the 1st of June. For 24 years, when family came to town, when friends came to town, they went elsewhere to stay in a hotel. For 24 years, if I've had a conference or a convention to go to, we've gone to Fairview Heights or Collinsville. A conference center of 30,000 square feet out on the west end of town with access from 255 and Highway 15, we will not be able to handle all of the conferences that want to come to town. I'm the director of Belleville Main Street. We are a thriving Main Street. There are maybe two buildings right now that are empty, and those two buildings would have occupants if we had people who were willing to be intelligent about trying to sell them and not ask for the moon. We have a list of folks who are waiting to come to Belleville and others who are saying, you know, if this project comes about, we're going to think about coming to Belleville. When I drive down Highway 15 and I go past the shrine and I come to Belleville Crossing, I look at all of those open parcels of land that are there because that was built about 2008 when everything went south. I see within a year, buildings being built all over Belleville Crossing and everywhere else along Highway 15. The merchants on Main Street, the restaurateurs on Main Street are totally in favor of this project out there. They are totally in favor of you voting for the TIF, because we all see that what that brings to town will bring it to Main Street as well as the west end. Thank you.
Chief Clay.
Bill Clay, 101 South Illinois. I'm speaking here tonight more as a Belleville taxpayer and a property owner, and maybe a little bit as a chief. As a taxpayer, I'm extremely happy and proud to see this type of development. It supports the mission of the shrine. It brings a unique dining experience to that area, not to mention the other restaurants that's going to come, a conference center, and even a hotel. We are the largest city south of Springfield. A hotel is long overdue. The city of Belleville has suffered the consequences of past mistakes by former city leaders on how best to move this community forward. I-64 is a glaring example of a lack of vision. Those leaders tried to hold on to the past. They believed that Belleville would keep its cozy little bedroom economy. After all, they had all of the department stores and they had all of the car dealerships. In went the interstate and out went many of Belleville's downtown stores and car dealerships to the communities along I-64. Today, we are a city of 45,000 without an interstate. We have seen, we have saw how interstate bias plays out just recently with St. Elizabeth's Hospital choosing to move to I-64. I'm told that Belleville rejected the mall, as well as the city of Swansea's desire to annex into Belleville. It is extremely difficult for me to believe that any city would continue to shoot itself in the foot so many times. Don't let this vote be the council's I-64 moment. This council can move forward with confidence and vision, knowing that as elected officials working with the staff, you have done your due diligence and structured the financial incentives to the developers so that there is minimal risk to the taxpayers, as stated by the Belleville News Democrat. This development is needed for continuous growth, city revenues, and prosperity for the shrine. Some will say we need to use our funds to hire more police officers. I will never argue with you on that issue. But people don't come to Belleville to look at the police. They come to shop, they come to eat, and to be entertained, and that is what this development will bring to Route 15. Thank you.
Barry Gregory, Creehan Zerich Pub and Vanquitt Center, 5500 North Belt West. Lady and gentlemen, I want to thank you for an opportunity to talk about this. One, I don't know anything about the numbers. You're more well-educated on that. But I chose to come here in 86 to work. In 98, I purchased a business here that I still operate, and as my esteemed alderman always talks about, we have a lot of old housing stock in this area. Anytime we can get new and revitalized, it's an opportunity to jump on. I also am State Vice President for the Illinois Licensed Beverage Association. In 2006, we hosted a state convention here in St. Clair County. Unfortunately, I had to take it to Fairview Heights to host the convention. Again, this year in October, we're hosting the 130th Annual State Convention for the State of Illinois. Again, we have to take it out of town to the city of O'Fallon. I would welcome the opportunity to have that hosted right here in Belleville anytime we could get a chance. So I welcome any development on the west end we can get. Thank you.
Do we have any other people? Yes, sir.
I'm Chris Rothweiler. I'm a member of the City Planning Commission. I live at 3125 Roan Hill Drive in Belleville, and I want to support this project. When we look at this project, we ought to look at it as what are the costs? What are the benefits to us? There are some costs that are going to be involved in this. There's no question about it. But I want to make one thing clear. It's been told over and over again, we're not spending any money, the developers not getting any, any benefit from this unless they build it. The risk is theirs. If it doesn't go, it doesn't go. So I'd also like to talk about TIF real quick. Everybody mentions that word a lot, and it is a word that means giving money to developers, and that's what it does. Do I like it? No. Should it be outlawed? That's another subject. That's another story. But the bottom line is that we live in a, in a world today where we have to deal with TIF. If you don't think so, just take a look at St. Elizabeth's Hospital, who benefited, I'll quote, but I'm not sure if it's about $19 million in TIF funds that the city of O'Fallon's given them to take 1,200 jobs from here. So it's one of the things we have to deal with, and it's one of the things that will make this project go. This project is consistent with the comprehensive plan, like Gloria Crowder mentioned previously. We want a convention center. We want hotels. It's in the comp plan that was voted on recently. This is consistent with that. And I want you to imagine a world of Belleville without any TIFs. Today, you wouldn't have a Target store. You would not have a Pets Mark. You wouldn't have Lowe's. You wouldn't have Walmart. You wouldn't have any of those things, because, guess what? They would have gone someplace else who gave them the TIF. And as I said, I'm not a fan, but that's how reality is. And as I said, I'm not a fan, but that's how reality is. And I want to urge you to vote for this project because it's right for Belleville, as many other speakers said, and I, it's hard to outdo Chief Clay, by the way. But it's hard, we need to do it. It's good for Belleville. It's right. The costs and benefits, the benefits outweigh the costs that are involved in this. And again, we don't spend any money unless they do the work. It's their project. They're responsible for making it go. And if it goes, we benefit. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, excuse me. My name is John Steinloggi. I live in Smithton, Illinois. But I lived in Belleville for thirty years when I had to sell my property on Coral Island Avenue because Walgreens wanted to go there. So, you know, what can I do, right? And I've been in business in Belleville for forty years, operating a restaurant. And mostly the aldermen that are here tonight, I know, and some of the new ones, I know. But years ago, when somebody said, "Where are you going tonight?", I used to say, "I was going to Silly Hall." And they said, "Silly Hall? What do you mean?" And I said, "Well, it's the Belleville Council Meeting, and some of the people on there act really silly. So instead of calling it Belleville Council Meeting, I named it Silly Hall. But tonight, we have a new beginning with seven new aldermen, older ladies, whatever." And believe me, the downtown area that Lillian Schneider talks about so much, and West Main Street, she was an alderwoman for four years. What did she do to help? Nothing. Everything was negative. She talks about, and so does a couple of other people, about Walmart out on Greymount Road. Well, if they would open their eyes and go up Greymount Road to Lebanon Avenue, they would see a big for sale sign for thirty-seven acres. And the name on the for sale sign is T H F Realty, which is Stan Cronky's Realty R. And he was going to put that in shingle if he didn't get the TIF money from Belleville. Now, you know, ladies and gentlemen, nobody likes TIF, but as the gentleman preceding me stated, we're surrounded by it. And if it doesn't come out here, it goes out there. The Keller family is an upstanding, great family, and their background is almost impeccable. I said almost because you never know. However, I, the naysayers always come out, but yet, when there's something good, they don't back it up, you know? Like some of the things, and I know a new alderman here tonight, in the hoops he had to jump through to get his old building fixed up. Now, if you want old building stock in Belleville to be fixed, you're going to have to slacken up on the rules a little bit. Something that was built in the eighteen hundreds, unless you spent tons of money, you can't bring it up to code. And there should be a variance on that. And myself, it's, you know, what can I say? But anyway, ladies and gentlemen, aldermen, councilmen, and everybody, vote for this thing because it will help our town. Thank you very much.
Do we have any other comments to come before this council? Seeing none, closed public participation. I'd also like to thank all the, oh, did I miss one? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I want to thank all the individuals who came this evening and express your heartfelt comments. And we encourage you to continue to be concerned about Belleville and all aspects that goes on with this city. All right, this time, we're going to move on with the other items on the agenda. Next in your packet would be the approval of the minutes, the council minutes for May eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen. We have a motion by Alderman Seibert, second by Alderman Schmidt, to approve. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yes, on page nine, I need to make it a correction. Under the ordinance seventy-eight fifty-eight, under discussion, it says Alderman Bitner asked what was being amended. I believe that was Alderman Tyler, who asked what was being amended.
Okay.
That's all I have, sir.
Okay. With that correction, is that okay for?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we move to ordinances. I would entertain a motion to read the ordinances by title only.
I move.
Alderman Schmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tyler. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Seven A, ordinance number seventy-eight fifty-nine, an ordinance approving the tax increment financing redevelopment plan and redevelopment project for the Route fifteen North Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project area.
Alderman Schmidt?
I move we pass this ordinance as ready.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Anthony, discussion?
Sir. I first want to say I appreciate the Keller family and Mr. Lungenfeld meeting with us and sharing your vision and ideas of the development. That being said, I do have reservations regarding the TIF plan specifically. I believe we are developing too far away from the city core. Also, I do not see how a development three point five miles from Belleville Crossing will stimulate growth there. In fact, I fear it will cannibalize from it and force businesses to close. I do not see the numbers supporting nine restaurants. I have concerns, as the TIF plan is written, that if for some reason the financing the developers are seeking falls short or does not materialize, especially once, once the project begins, that the city will be approached to modify the agreement and would have to issue bonds or give back more in rebates to keep the project moving forward. I am all for Belleville being successful and bringing business to the city. I hope that, if approved this evening, this development is successful. However, I believe there is a tremendous liability to the taxpayers of the city. It is difficult for me to vote in favor of this when the city core is deteriorating as the city cannot sustain the infrastructure it now has. Therefore, my distinguished colleagues, I will not be voting in favor of the ordinances this evening.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes, I would just like to comment. Before I left my house today, I had had calls in the last few days from twenty-seven members of Ward Two, and then there are several here tonight that I had not talked to on the phone. Two people, I think, that were on my, that are in our ward, that all said, "Please vote yes." We are in this core that, you know, people mentioned between Sixth and Lindenwood. Well, guess what? It's being revitalized. Every time you turn around, there's new businesses opening. The city has plans with Belleville Main Street to work on this. These things are being done. But we have to look at the future. And, you know, my husband made reference to the fact, we have friends that have six hundred dollars in property taxes in Fairview Heights, and their house is like way better than mine. I pay quite a bit more than that. I've talked to several people. I started asking them, "What was your property tax?", and it's all amazingly high. We could be looking at six hundred dollar bills. But we're not, because a council didn't look at the future. We, I think this will revitalize fifteen. I think we are blessed to have a mayor and economic development department that has worked hard. Emily, who's no longer with us, and, and the new people, they're working hard to make Belleville better. They see a future, and we have to look at that. I do not want to be on this council and look back in ten years and say, "Wow, we should have done that." Because guess what? Someone else has it. I think the risk is low. I think the package has been put together, and it seems like all my questions have been answered, and people want this. If, you know, please, I ask everyone on here to look in your heart and vote yes for what is good for Belleville. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, call for a roll call vote.
Hazel.
Yes.
Kinsella.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Bitner.
No.
Tyler.
Yes.
Randall.
Yes.
Ovian.
Yes.
Anthony.
Yes.
Sillsby.
Yes.
Dentelman.
Yes.
Seibert.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Wiggington.
Yes.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have seven B ordinance?
Yes, ordinance number seventy-eight sixty, an ordinance designating and approving the Route fifteen North Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project area.
Motion.
I make a motion to approve ordinance seventy-eight sixty.
Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Schmidt. Any, any discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bitner.
No.
Tyler.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dentelman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Seven C, ordinance number seventy-eight sixty-one, an ordinance adopting tax increment financing in the Route fifteen North Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project area. Motion. Alderman Elmore, second by Alderman Anthony. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bitner.
No.
Tyler.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dentelman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. That concludes our, our special meeting. On the agenda, we are looking forward to working with the Keller Group and the Shrine now to move forward with this project, and so we're looking for great things to take